All due order, the city council work session for the city of East Grand Forks for Tuesday, December 12th, 2017 is now five o'clock. Would City Clerk please call roll?
May I see you, Andrew?
Are you present?
Calling roll.
Here.
Council President Mark Holstead.
Here.
Council Vice President Chad Grasso, Council Members Florence Vatter.
Here.
Mike Parkshavinsky.
Here.
Tim Reithow.
Here.
Henry Twicken. Mark DeMers.
Does turn in the quorum. Just heads up, I might have to move number five down a little bit. Chad will be here. He had to take care of the school, calling some parents on bus accidents. My understanding, nobody was hurt, so that's fine. So we'll start at number one, reported feasibility of 2018 assessment job number two. Mr. Emery.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this is a report of feasibility for street and utility improvements on 11th Avenue Northeast within the industrial park. And basically, the extent of the project would be from Highway Two, south to 10th Street southeast. The project would include complete removal of the street, removal and replacement of the sanitary sewer system, removal and replacement of the storm sewer, and then upon completion of the utility work, we would reconstruct the street. Right now, I'm kind of working with our work with city staff, too. We're estimating the sanitary sewer improvements cost to be about $159,734. That includes replacement of about 975 feet of sanitary sewer, replacing that with a PVC sewer, new manholes, and then replacement of the individual service leads up to the property lines. Right now, we're proposing that that cost would not be assessed, and those costs would be paid out of the sewer enterprise funds. And then same thing with the storm sewer. We'd be looking at replacement of the existing storm sewer system, including new manholes, catch basins, installation of a drain tile system. Estimated that total project cost to be about $91,680. And again, we're proposing that that storm sewer improvements would not be assessed, but rather paid out of the, again, the sewer enterprise funds. The street improvement portion of the project, we would be looking at putting in new aggregate base course, probably a minimum of 10 inches of aggregate base course, concrete curb and gutter, and seven-inch non-reinforced concrete paving. We're estimating that cost to be about $792,181. As far as the assessments, I know right now, the city's assessment policy for reconstruction is 100%. Like we've talked in the past, to make, to meet the special benefit test, it is a lot harder on reconstruction-type projects because they already have a street, and you're just essentially replacing it, but it's harder to prove the, you know, the benefit to that project. So, so what we did look at, and what I kind of showed there is if we were to do a 100% assessment, you know, your city share would be zero, of course. That equates to a front benefit of $389.48 and an end benefit of $129.83. 50% assessment, you know, you'd have 50% city share, come up with a front benefit of $194.74 and an end benefit of $64.91. And then we went all the way down to essentially the 30%, which you would assess $237.654, city share would be $554.526, or a front foot benefit of $116.84 and an end foot benefit of $38.95. So, again, I guess kind of for discussion purposes, just kind of wanted to give you those numbers. Areas proposed to be assessed would be lots three through nine and block one of the replat of all lots, 59 through 64, and then on the east side of 11th Avenue Northeast, those lots are currently unplatted. We did provide a cost estimate. It kind of break down in there, you'll kind of see how we came up with the sanitary sewer costs, storm sewer costs. Do have a map showing kind of the front and end benefits, and that I did include in your packet, I included basically a preliminary assessment roll, so you can kind of see the total assessment, again, at that 150%, 40%, 30%. So, I guess with that, I guess we'll just kind of open it up for discussion.
Henry.
I'd just like to make a comment, Mr. President. One of the things that I think is important when we look into it, that we consider drain tile, the concrete that's there now is sinking in. The other thing is that in the industrial park, there is some of the streets that had a substantial amount from a state grant, and the terminology that was used a few years ago, a farm-to-market road, it's 50% or more. So, when we start going east, we should look into that to see if it's still possible. There was a special program. And the, the other thing that will happen there is it gives the American Crystal New Option to come in with their operation from another direction. And the final thing is that it'll take traffic out of, out of South Forest Street by the Sacred Heart School, and I think anytime we can take heavy traffic away from school by, for purpose of safety, why, it's a good move. So, I think we should go ahead with it, take and plan the entire thing because it's, that apparently is the direction we're going as far as industrial development is concerned. And, but the first thing I think we should do is see if there's some state money. I think that's, that probably will help us with the storm sewer, street, water, a lot of other things. It seems that the legislature is a little more conscious of the rural areas if it benefits rural industrial farm development. Nothing else.
Steve, you want to address that, sir?
Um, I get, the one thing I was just gonna point out, too, just so you're aware of, you know, in discussions, too, the city does have, and Carla can correct me if I'm wrong, but she does have some TIF dollars that could be utilized to help pay the city portion if you don't look at assessing 100%. I don't know if anyone you want to add on that, Carla, but, and then just kind of for comparison purposes, too, I did look back at even the Point of Woods Fifth and Sixth Projects with the sub-base curb and gutter, concrete paving on that project. We were at about $256 a lineal foot is kind of what the front benefit came up on that one. So, just kind of, maybe kind of somewhat of a comparison with some of these other percentages that I laid out and kind of what the, you know, estimated assessment amount would be, too. So, but I think what's, you know, important before we ever move on to two, to any type of improvement hearing, I think we have to be in agreement as far as what do we want to assess. I don't think we want to be contemplating that during a improvement hearing, so.
Mr. Emery.
Yeah, thank you. I guess one thing I would like the council to be aware of, I guess I'm not sure with what Mr. Twicken said, as far as the state aid money, if there's any, if there's any additional state money that would be available. If that is available, that would be one thing, and you can take that off the top of the cost of the reconstruction, and that one count against as far as, I guess, setting a precedent for what we're doing for assessments in the future. Couple items I'd like to point out here is the sanitary, sanitary and storm sewer and water in this are not being assessed. Those are going to be paid for out of our storm, out of our enterprise funds, so that would, you know, be adding to that. If, if those are going to be included into what was assessed, it would be a significant addition, so we're already subsidizing that to a certain amount. And the, the TIF money, the money that we would have available, that is not a continuing funding source. So if we'd be using it for paying down or to offset what the assessment costs were going to be on this particular assessment project, you know, whether that would set a precedent for the future or not could be debatable or whatever, but I just wanted to make sure the council's aware that that is not a continued funding source. If we were going to be adopting a policy where we do not assess the entire amount to the joint property owners, we would need to find a funding source for that as well. So, I just wanted you to be aware.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. DeMers.
Everybody's sharing today. Ah, thank you, Mr. President. I guess I have a couple of questions. You know, we don't typically do a lot of industrial park work as far as reconstruction yet. We haven't gone through a lot of that. And I, I guess one of the questions I have is, does our end benefit policy work similarly as it should in residential? Because in residential, you usually have a road with a lot of narrow, narrow lots that all face one road, and then we use the narrow, the narrowest dimension as the front. Well, when you're talking about industrial parks, a lot of these lots can take up half a city block or half, you know, so it doesn't necessarily end up with the same, doesn't get to the same purpose as what I think we're trying to do on the residential. So, I don't, I just look at, you know, the Douglas Place, you know, property, and the vast majority of their property is on the one side, and I would argue that they have the most ingress and egress on that side, and why would they, why would we consider that? And partially because it takes up the whole half of a block, you know? So, it's different, it would be different if we had lots of deep lots that were smaller or something. So I just, I would like to kind of maybe, at least, take, take a, a little bit of time and maybe, maybe not tonight, but over the course and maybe say, is it different, is there a different metric we can use for assessing things when we get to industrial park-type layouts? Just because the, the way things are laid out there is different. And I guess it's not, it's not, at the end of the day, you guys still divide it all up or whatever, and you're going to have to do another street, you're going to have to divide it all up. But I just, for my, in my thinking, if, if we want to get to a thing where we're trying to do things with purpose, I don't know if this gets at the same purpose as what we do with our residential. The second is, I need, I'm just looking for some reminder, on 17th Northeast, what was the percentage that we ended up settling with? With the, the one landowner or the one property owner?
Ron, do you remember that? Otherwise, if I, I, don't quote me on this, but I, I think it was around 50%.
50%?
Yeah.
I guess we should have that number. I think it, if we're going into something like this, just looking at the properties and looking at the values, I would imagine will be somewhere in the similar thing. I mean, I would price into this estimate, you're going to have to do appraisals or whatever before all this is said and done, I would imagine. The second, or the third, I guess, is what's the condition of the water out there?
Approximately half of the water name, kind of a solid end halfway going north there. There's actually PVC, and then it actually turns to ACP water name. It is on the burn, so I don't know whether it's happening at this time.
Okay. But is there stuff that, any large leads that go across or anything that would, okay, so there's nothing with water at all, and is it on the east or the west?
Well, it starts out on the west side, and then it actually jumps over to the east side, so.
Of course. Okay. And like, I think we're, we're at a tough spot here at this project. I mean, this is the epitome of tough, tough decisions for the city. I mean, if anybody's been over there, I drive there as much as anybody, it's, the road's in tough shape. You know, I've talked to Jason a few times about the drainage over there, and, you know, it's, it's just an unmanageable thing because it's old, it's shot, the subgrade is garbage. But the magnitude, or the, the size of the project comes with a big cost, and, you know, there's a big cost to the city, and we have to figure out how much we're, we're willing to take on. You know, I mean, if you did the 50, or the 50%, you're talking half a million dollars, and where, where are we going to come up with that? Because that's, if, if that's the case, you know, from what we settled with the other, that other tenant on the other project, we should use something to that, to that number as some sort of a benchmark, at least going in. I would say it'd be smarter to do it that way than go through the litigation, because I would imagine that on a project like this, just looking at the numbers, you're going to see some pushback on it. I know we have someone here that's, that just recently purchased property, and I don't know if he wants to disclose how much he purchased it for, but I would imagine it's pretty close to what his assessment would be, you know? So, so, that's all I have. I, like I said, it, I have no, I don't believe that the project isn't needed, I just think it's one of these tough spots where we, as a city, need to figure out how much it's going to cost, and it's not just them, but how much eventually it's going to come back to the city. It's going to be spending.
Mr. Emery.
I think one of the things that we've done up to now, if we have a standard right now which says it's 100% assessed, that's the reason we don't replace streets, right? So you can leave the policy as it is, 100% assessed, to the local property owners, and then you're kind of at an impasse because I don't know that you can replace any streets inside of that policy and have it still uphold or be withheld or upheld in the special benefit test. So that would be the concern. If we try to leave it as it is, we won't be, I don't think, replacing very many streets in the foreseeable future, and some that really need it.
Anything else? Mr. Greglauer, do you want to say anything? Just ask.
Yeah, I do. Well, first of all, I'm saying sorry for being late. I gotta figure out what's going on here.
We gotta have you on the mic.
Oh.
Have a seat.
Can I have this?
Todd, just come down here. Yeah.
Might have some ideas.
They're keeping line between us.
All right. Okay, what, okay, first, is it on?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, what, of course, I own this corner right on this, I own that right there, that lot. What, what are we talking on redoing here? What, what are we doing here? What's this?
Highway to the 10.
To there?
Yeah.
That road there.
Correct.
How about, how about this road right here? Well, you're laughing, I mean, no.
Not, not part of this project, no.
I mean, that, I mean, that has been bandied up, though, I think.
Yes.
What's wrong with this road? I mean, really? I mean, I own this land right here, I mean, I don't, what, what are you going to do to it?
Well, basically, we're looking at replacing the sanitary sewer system. We've pretty much got to repair up the street through that, and the sanitary sewer system right up the middle of the street.
Would you grab him a mic?
So, with that, then, we would, you know, basically core out the street, get a good gravel basin, put in a drain tile system, and then basically repave it. Other issues I think we're seeing out there is just, the existing street only has like maybe two inches of gravel, no drain tile. I think we got American Crystal ponds kind of right adjacent to us there, so I think our subgrade is very wet. So, while we're replacing those utilities, we would, you know, repair the street, put a better street section in.
Would, would you ever be interested in how about doing that, that frontage, filling that, get that whole thing all gra, all paved?
We have looked at that. In fact, as you're aware, the city did put in kind of a patch there, kind of in front of the Douglas Place.
No, no, I'm talking on the, no, on the other side.
While you're on 10th Street?
Go, go to the west, there's a, it, it's a gravel road there in that, for that frontage.
Yep.
But, but if you keep going down, it will, it turns this to concrete, it turns to a paved, you know, concrete road.
Mm-hmm.
If they're doing that project there, you guys might want to do, do that all the way to there.
Sure.
You know?
Who would pay for that?
What?
Who's going, who would pay for that? Property owners.
Let me tell you something. You guys, you don't, that's one thing, you're not a visionary, you gotta, you know, there's, there's development could be done here.
He's in charge by vision.
You know? We gotta, you gotta have a, you gotta have a, you really, you gotta look at it, hey, we embedded this, all this land right here, you know? I got, I own some of that, and I, I plan on doing some developing there, you know?
So you'd end up with two front benefits, or?
You know?
One thing that is very challenging on those frontage roads is, I mean, we really only have one side to assess because the state owns the other side, which we can't assess the state, so it, you know, it gets very expensive for either the property owners or the city when we start looking at those frontage roads. Not to say that we can't do something, but.
So that, that road right there, that, well, the ma, the road ain't that bad, then? It's the sewer that you want to upgrade.
Well, the road's in tough shape, too.
Road is bad, too?
Yeah.
I mean, no, I'm not, I go, I don't go down it enough, I guess, or it's bad.
Yep. Any other? Any questions?
Nope. Mr. Gorty? Oh, real quick, if I, my new building will be open January 1st, so be ready, guys. Be ready.
In those locations where there's no development right now, and if we did the road in conjunction with the development, there are economic development TIFs available, for example, that we could, if we were going to be generating revenues to pay for the bonds over time, the roads, the road or improvements could be done with that as a payment source as well.
Okay.
Do we have existing TIF district, or do we have to create a new one?
We'd have to create a new one. We, I've already talked with folks at Springstead, for example, and our attorneys down in the Twin Cities, and the process is relatively simple, and they're prepared to, to work with us to do that, but what I would recommend to you is that we try to tie it together with the projects going on, so we're starting to generate revenue from the day the improvement goes in. Hey, I would, I would hesitate to recommend to you that we use that without having a project that would generate revenue, because we need to find some way to pay those bonds.
In other words, you'd, you'd recommend that we have a buyer for those lots, or someone?
Actually, not just a buyer, a, a building going up in there.
Sure.
I mean, if we have.
A, a plan for development?
Yes, something that would create value.
Rather than just a, a cornfield.
Yes, something that would be creating value.
So is it immediate development, or is there timetables on that?
Is there anything immediate? Todd, do you have something you're going to go in there shortly?
Yeah, there's, there's stuff in the works over there.
Okay, that's where we need to work together.
Yeah.
Todd, for example, if, is there anything going to be applying for a permit the next 30 days or 60 days? I don't think so, but in the future, it's something, and it's one way to, to look at these things, but we'd have to look at, well, what we'd end up doing is looking at the revenue that would be generated, so we know how many, what portion could be paid for by the TIF bonds as opposed to paying for it out of other city sources.
Is that something you can put together with Mr. Emery and present something that would show what it would take and?
Yeah. I mean, the same thing's true for any grants that might be available for the state, because there are some infrastructure monies available.
We'd have to, we'd have to take some liberties as far as estimating what might be going in there and what the tax value would be, if that's something.
Be happy to do that.
Mr. Parkshavinsky.
Just a question about timing. To have, to have some development, in, at least, a plan to have something in the ground is not going to happen real quickly. What happens if we don't pave this and do the utilities this year and put it off till next year?
Jason and I have talked about that. I mean, you know, the sewer needs to be replaced soon or later. I mean, if it wouldn't happen this year, I mean, if we did it 2019, that'd be fine, too. What we're kind of anticipating is, being we're going to have the entire street section tore up, too, with the utility replacement, you know, we're thinking we'll probably do the utility replacement one year.
Yep.
Probably put in the gravel basin, the drain tile.
Yeah.
Maybe we could even drive on that for a while temporarily, but then we would pave it the following year, so.
It does, it does make sense if there is a future paving project, if we can delay this and do it all at once, it's economy to scale.
Yep.
Help bring the cost down.
Yep. Hope I can work with Mr. Gorty and. Any other questions at this time? I think basically you're looking at working with Mr. Gorty and not doing anything at, at this time?
Yeah, I think we'll just work with Mr. Gorty and bring something back to you guys.
Okay.
Just want to make sure.
Get a little bit larger scale project, but.
This is a really good project because of the analysis that you've done to show the effect of 30, 40, 50, 100. You could even throw in like a 60% local share versus, you know, 60 to the property owners, 40 to the city, and we could even make it a separate agenda item now to talk in some more length about our street replacement policy. Outside of this, in a way, but kind of using what happens with those various numbers as a, as a guide, because it's probably time to have that conversation way over time. It's not going to be that much fun, we're going to have some disagreement, but it's, it's important to have that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. DeMers.
One additional option we might want to think about.
Slide the mic down. You should buy some more mics.
Um, when we think about that frontage road, is I know that MINDOT is looking at their safety plan from, from basically the curve all the way to the bridge, and I would imagine they're going to be looking pretty hard at 7th Avenue where there's a crossing there, but it's not really, it's just kind of a opening, and I would imagine they're going to request that we close that. And I know, whatever your, your feelings on whether or not they want to close it, but you could pay, you could maybe get a trade-off for paying for that, that frontage road if they want people to go on the frontage road or something to that effect, but it's just another, I would imagine that's going to be coming up, so, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Anything else on that topic? See none? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Emery. Number two, request for lift station repair, Mr. Stordahl.
Excuse me. So our lift station, number one is our master lift station, the one that now goes on to our interconnect lift station. Majority of the city waste goes through this lift station. The current concrete wet well structures in need of repair. There's rebar now that's sticking out of the walls and stuff like that, and one of the ways that they, they treat that without totally redoing it is to reline it. There's a few different ways that they can do that. We had some different contractors come out, looked at their, their ways or their methods of doing it. We even went to Park Rapids to look at RDO's facility. They have a lot stronger waste than we do here at the city, so they have some experience in relining their lift stations. We feel that we found some good methods and ways to do that, and would like to move forward with the project. would like to move forward with the project this year. So I'm asking tonight for approval, I guess, to have WSN develop plans and specs to do that, relining of the wet well at lift station number one.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Tuit?
I think it's important that we keep up our infrastructure and we should proceed as suggested by Mr. Stordahl.
Anybody else have anything for Mr. Stordahl? See none, sir. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three, request for ADA transition plan for transportation plan, Ms. Ellis.
In 2019, we have to have an ADA transition plan in place for our transportation system. By that I refer to anything within the right-of-way, in order for us to continue to receive federal funding, not just from the true federal government, but also any federal dollars that go to the state that then would be allocated to us as well. That being said, I've visited with Earl at the MPO, and transition plans right now are being conducted at a number of different cities throughout the state of Minnesota. Morehead, right now, just completed their ADA transition plan at about $150,000. So what I'm asking today is that we request that the MPO complete the study for the city of East Grand Forks by hiring a consultant that's at a cost of an 80/20. We have estimated that the study will be no more than $50,000, which would be the city's share 10,000 or less. So I think it would be a good opportunity for us. Transit already has an ADA plan in place, so we continue with our federal dollars there. We will need that for transportation, and then eventually we'll start looking at city buildings, playgrounds, anything that's owned within the city for that ADA transition plan. However, we do not typically pay for the operation of our city buildings with federal dollars, so we do have some time there. So I'm just asking for the city to make a motion at the formal meeting next week to ask the MPO to put us on their works plan, so.
Mr. Murphy?
I just wanted to bring up to the council's attention, we did receive word recently that it's possible that the city engineer could do this type of work, maybe contracting with us. After checking into this a little bit and thinking about it a little bit, I still think we should move forward with doing this with the MPO. They certainly could bid on that, but in this particular situation, we would be able to pay 20% of the overall cost, whereas if we contracted with them ourselves, we would be paying the whole cost.
Might get a little more comprehensive of a plan. And again, that being said, they have to go out for an RFP, so the engineering firm would definitely have the ability to put in a proposal.
We would encourage them to apply.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? See none?
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number four, consider approving a request to hire Tuferson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I received a letter of resignation from Merle Holverson the other day with 38 years of service with the department. He'll be finishing up, I believe it's two days after Christmas he finished his shift. We discussed this back in January, and we had started the hiring process in anticipation of this happening sooner than this. So we do have a list, final list approved, certified for a year with the top three candidates. I guess what I'm asking is, in order to stay in line with the safer grant, which we're still under to replace that position as of January 1st of 2018.
Any other questions?
I think we should move it on. He has to be full strength all the time with what's going on in that department. They're very, very busy.
Anybody else have any questions at this time? See none, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Let's skip number five, we'll come back to it. Jed is on his way, so. Number six, EDA strategic and marketing plan consultant selection, Mr. Gordy.
A few weeks ago, I talked with the EDA. One of the things that had grown out of our discussion at this level is rather than doing work simply on the website, was to work on a strategic and marketing plan, finishing the strategic plan, doing the marketing plan, and tying that together with the city's, its own strategic goal setting that it had done. And I brought that to you and proceeded based upon, basically, I understood you to say we could proceed with that. Advertised, we had three respondents. They were all excellent respondents. There was a committee who reviewed, interviewed all three. At that point, one was eliminated and two were moved on for final interviews today at the EDA meeting. And at today's meeting, the EDA has strongly recommended that AE2S be used to do the marketing plan and do the work that we're doing. Very impressive, I would say, wouldn't you? Mike, Tim, very impressive.
Both worked very good.
Yeah. I mean, we're fortunate. We had three excellent firms, and the hard thing is always choosing which one you want out of excellence. So this is monies that will be partially from the 2017 budget that we, that were originally in the budget for the webpage improvements. So we've saved some of those dollars, and they'll be scrounged from several different sources. It'll be partially from the 2017 budget and partially from the 2018 budget, so that there will be no additional funds asked for to do this. The other thing, in doing this, is potentially it's something that the entire city could take advantage of, or whichever other departments find that this would be useful for them.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gordy at this time?
Any idea what would be the process if the product of this work, when it's finished, what would be the process to extend that to the other departments? Would we go back to them, or would there be something right there that we could apply citywide?
I've asked them and their work to make it adaptable, so it could be done as easily as possible to, for the other departments, because I'd like to minimize what we'd have to do to expand its utility to the city. I mean, that's something I requested, and that's something I expect from them.
Good. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Mr. Vitter.
Thank you. He adds, the proposal's just short of $30,000.
Yes.
Looking at your financials, your fund balances just shy of $90,000, the negative $90,000. So what's the plan to get your fund balance into the positive?
Which fund?
EDA administration.
As I recall, the EDA administration budget doesn't have any money transferred in at any point until the end of the budget year. I mean, if we were doing this a different way and if monies were transferred into the budget at the beginning of the year, you'd see that there'd be a positive balance right now. But because of the way, because money isn't transferred in until after the expenses are done for the year, it will always show a negative balance.
Okay. Anybody else have anything at this time? I see none. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll keep going, and I'll come back to five in a little bit here. Number seven, consider approval for the Sorley Bridge decorative lighting plan, Mayor Gander.
Yes, the team has been meeting. In fact, the team was assembled before I was mayor, so I want to say under Mayor Stouse and the team, and they met, I would say, a couple of years even before I came in. So this is the group that decides about the lighting, the decorative lighting of the Sorley Bridge. I think we've all enjoyed seeing that. It changes for various holidays and various seasons. And the team, if you look, if you're curious who it is, under 5.1 in this agreement, it's represented by the city of Grand Forks, the city of East Grand Forks, the Grand Forks Historic Preservation Commission, North Dakota State Historic Preservation, Minnesota State Historic Preservation, North Dakota DOT, and MINDOT. So those are the representatives on this team. We've been meeting once a year face-to-face. Some will call in, and then lots of email in between to nail this all down. So the agreement that's before us for our approval then would be the document that would guide the scheduled calendar of decorative lighting. So we've planned ahead with a calendar for the 12-month cycle of everything that could be planned, all the holidays, all the seasons, even the UND homecoming is included in that. Now, what's not included in that would be any special events that would come along that we would want to change it for a day, or a weekend, or a week, or some shorter period of time, things that you could not anticipate, but that would still meet certain conditions, certain criteria. And so what we'll be looking for, I'd say really two things. One, that could hopefully show up in our minutes of our meeting. One, the approval of this document, and two, just making sure that I'm designated as mayor to the one who can sign this, and that would show up then on a bank of signatures. Each one is representative of individuals on those parts of the team. Each one would have a representative. It'll be Mayor Brown, myself, and then others from inside those organizations. And please, by all means, there's a separate document that'll be coming that doesn't need our approval, but it'll just be the process for, again, if you want to change the lighting for a day or a weekend for some special event, there will be a document that, kind of an application that a person could fill out and turn it into one of the mayor's offices, and then it works through the process according to that. So that's what I'll be looking for then, is approval of the document with wording to the effect that I'm authorized to sign this and to sign on a signature page, which will include a signature from each of those members of the team. Any questions, I'd be glad to take them.
Anybody have any questions at this time?
Are you sure we have enough historic preservation representatives on the committee?
Never enough.
Oh, good, because I worry about that.
There is some concern that some group could try to change it, or try to really limit the capability of what that lighting package can do in the name of historic preservation. Here's the good news. In the gathering, we've all agreed, even the historic preservation folks have agreed, that this lighting package in no way detracts from the architecture of that bridge. In fact, it enhances it. I mean, we're seeing that bridge now photographed and featured in so many different places with that lighting package. So I don't get any sense that somebody's trying to strong-arm the process and limit the capability of that lighting package. I think everybody's on board that it's a real positive.
Anything else, sir?
I'm good.
Anybody have any questions for? See none? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Now we'll go back to number five, discussion on review of 2018 budget. Mr. Murphy and Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. I guess I'll get started. Carl, if you can jump in here whenever she wants to. As you know, this was brought forward at the last council meeting. We had the 10% levy increase was included in that resolution. Since that time, there has been some discussion about amending, amending the levy to eight and a half percent, overall increase over 2017, with some discussions on what potentially could be taken out of the budget to make that, to make that number work. We have put together some information as far as how that might affect what we have, as far as, as far as what we'd be pulling out and what some of the recommendations are. So far, at this point, what has been recommended would be park fencing. And the other items that were discussed were some capital outlays, particularly some street projects. If that is the case, that would be something that would take a little bit more conversation here amongst the council as a whole. Some of these street projects, a local match on that comes out of levy. The majority of it does not. Several of the items that are listed under do not come out of the levy. They come from other funding sources. So I guess, before I turn it over to Carla for any comments or to the council for any questions as far as staff, I guess what I would ask is, what is the, what is the overall purpose of what we're, we'd be trying to accomplish to go to eight and a half percent? Is this due to, are we receiving public outcry on this, or is this more of a philosophical decision, just saying that eight and a half feels better than 10%? I will certainly comment later as far as what my recommendations would be as the administrator on how to proceed with this and what we should do as a city. I'd be more than open to hearing what, I guess, what is precipitating this and why the push for eight and a half percent is going on.
Can I just ask, what's our timeline? Is there a statutory timeline for amending? Or can we?
You can amend it right up to the point where it has to be certified with the county.
December 28.
How long after a city passed resolution can the mayor sign it? It has to sit for a week?
You can sign it anywhere between four days up to 10 days after.
Four days, perfect. So that's, if we acted on Tuesday, there'd be time to sign before the 28.
Sorry to interrupt.
That's right. Mr. Grassel.
I will say, I was one of the people that questioned the 10%. And I'll say, I screwed up on the, I should have brought it up last, last week when we voted on it, and I was thinking a different way than which. I thought we were ringing it back here to work on it, and then we were going to be approved. But that's here all, and I'll just say it's my fault. That's fine. So, I mean, I just started looking at it and thinking about it, and I have had a few people talk to me about the budget, and it isn't just about feeling good. It's about what, you know, the mayor threw something out at us a while ago about making sure that, yep, the overall was 10, but, you know, he wouldn't go any higher than 10, and he'd like to see that all affect people at about 4%, 5% on their overall taxed bill. And if you look at the one layout that Carla has given us, you know, and we talk about our lower-income families in East Grand Forks, I think they're the ones that got hit the hardest if on this 10%. So I was just looking at some numbers and just threw some things out at some people, and I talked to Reed about the fencing, and he was okay with that. And I believe that we have a good plan about going after some maybe possible twins grant money and using some other monies that are available to us to do some of the fencing projects. I'm not quite sure, and I think someone brought it up before, about the interest on the pool, why that $20,000 needs to be in there. So if you look at that, that's $48,000 already. And then I just thought about, you know, we have five projects, or is it six projects that, the five projects that we had laid out, and one of them's the path from 220 to 2, is that a project that we really need? There, you know, there's another project out there, I can't even remember which one it was, but, and then I'd like, you know, 13th and Biglin Road, what does that all entail? And by doing that, that can eliminate some of the $131,000 that was allocated to that project. That's what I was thinking. And by there, you're looking at $100,000, which gets us close to, or if I'm not, at eight and a half, or almost more than eight and a half on a normal levy. I'm just opening it up for a conversation to think about it. And we've whacked a few of those, we've whacked our community pretty hard in the last couple of years, trying to make up for some things that has been lacked. And I'm just, I'm throwing it out there. I've talked to the mayor about it, talked to a few other people about it, and that's where I'm at. So, I mean, it's got to be up to this group. I know we voted on it, but I just thought I'd throw it out there as a thought process. I did ask Steve about, you know, what would they all entail? What is the individual prices? If you take $131,000, on the average, is that like 1.3 million if it's? If it's a part of that project, if you divide that out, it's $260,000 a project. If you take two of them out, that's $520,000. That all starts to add up. So I'm just throwing it out there if anybody else has a feeling for that or not, so.
Just kind of a follow-up to Chad then. With the 2018 federal project, again, we did look at, I guess, five different project areas. The city is receiving about $860,000 in federal grant line. That is a 80-20 split. So essentially, we need to have about $1.1 million in construction costs to get the full hundred, the full hundred and eighty, $860,000. With the five options that we did look at, we were initially at about 1.2 million in construction dollars. And again, the way I think the intent was that it was set up is we would put together plan specs. We had bid all five options, but then once we get bids, we actually have actual numbers, then we can decide, do we want to do options one through five? Do we want to eliminate a couple of them? So I think you'd have that option at that point.
But we'd, so get me wrong, we'd still have the money sitting there that if we didn't, if we took the money out of that spot, it's not there and it's not part of the levy, correct?
If you look in the packet, today's packet, the first page says the 10%. Second page is what we still have in for capital. And the third page is the changes that have been made since the last printout of the 10%. And if you look at the top, the transfer section, the 18 AJ1, the $131,000 is out. Because Steve and I sat down and David and Jason, and we worked out a plan where, if you look at the 209 state aid maintenance fund, that page I just gave you, okay, these are maintenance dollars that we can use. And if you look on the bottom here for 2018, the city will have a 20% share of soft costs of 285, 723, and then we'll have to pay for the assessments of 59, 260, which still leaves a balance in that account. And the other part that the city has to pay, we can use state aid construction dollars, which Steve actually asked the state to get out of the pot that we have sitting that are only for construction dollars, which he already did. And the state had said that he can do that. And I think it was like $161,000 or something.
Already.
And if nothing else, we can actually probably take more. We can actually reduce that 285 a little bit more because he said that they do pay for some soft costs. So at this point, when you look at the 10% and the eight and a half that I gave you, that 131 is out. So we already took that out. But if you look at the, go farther down in the list, we took out 5252 for capital projects, which is part of that $34,000. We took out debt service because we have collected special assessments enough for the last bond that we don't have to use that tax levy money to pay the debt. We took out the pool interest for 21, 225. We still have to pay the interest, but we can actually get the money out of the sales tax fund. So it'll be a transfer in. The transfer of the levy for 2007 from the 280 fund for 108, we, 109, 417, I took out because the 280 fund doesn't have the money in that account to make that transfer. So that will have to come out of general fund. And then I also took out a transfer from the 401 fund of 120 that we did a few, for a few years now for street reconstruction, with the intention that $120,000 there would be the transportation amount that the mayor actually wanted to start doing. So actually, the 401 fund, after 2024, we will be done paying that loan that we have from Water and Light for special assessments. We have collected special assessments out of that fund and we can use some of that fund for other infrastructure, which would, in 2024, would probably, I'm estimating, about a million dollars. So those numbers are in the 10% number and in the eight and a half percent number.
Question for you. If we took that 120 down to 100 and then also did, took out the 20 increase in fund balance, you'd zero that out at eight and a half?
Technically, yes.
I mean, as mathematically you could do it, if that was the will of the group that's around the table here.
Henry.
Mr. President, I join the mayor and Chad. I think let's just take, do the paperwork on eight and a half and let's make it work. Let's get out the vacuum cleaner and bring it down there. I'd be, will make a motion to that effect.
So the only way to get down to that zero would be what you said?
That's one way?
That's one, yeah.
Yep.
Is there any other way to do that? You said the fencing's out?
Yes.
And the pool interest is out?
Yes.
The $131,000 that was for the projects that, it's not being taken out of levy, it's going to be funded from other sources, so that doesn't affect the levy on that.
So my discussion with you an hour ago, what wasn't taken out of there and showing on eight and a half?
Carla, can you answer that?
The fencing. And then I gave you the new report with the fencing. So it's at 39,000, 920 with the fencing out.
I just wanted to make sure.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
So at the eight and a half number, then what we're left at at this particular point is $40,000 roughly?
Correct.
So you'd zero out what was going to be contributed to the general fund reserve and you could reduce that 120 to 100? And there would be sure other ways to do it, whatever anyone else might be interested in?
Mr. Vedder, thank you. What's the 120 going, you're putting 120, there's, in the current budget now, there's 120 going into the 401 fund?
No, I mean, out of the 401 fund. It used to come out of the 280 fund, which didn't have enough dollars to come in. And so, balance the budgets, we've been putting 120 in since Kuzingay was here.
We're pulling $120,000 out of a 401 and bringing it into the general fund?
Yes.
And the 401 fund is?
It's actually, the dollars started when, after the flood to get growth and they paid for some of the streets. So we actually have been using that fund instead of taking out a bond, we actually been using that fund. And we also took a loan from the Water and Light instead of doing a bond. So the loan that we have from Water and Light, the assessments for those specials are going into the 401 fund and paying the Water and Light. So the 401 fund is just like any other bond fund, but once the dollars are repaid, those are dollars we can use for any infrastructure that we want.
And you're telling me right now, we're paying the bonds off or the loan to Water and Light and we're taking $120,000 out of there each year to pad our general fund budget? There isn't a separate, as the mayor suggested a few months ago, of setting up a separate fund and putting $100,000 or 120 to do street maintenance? We're not doing that in this current budget?
No. But what I said and what was meant is that the 401 could, in essence, do that and it's getting special assessments in there. And we could, in essence, take general fund dollars and actually put in that fund also to use it because it is for infrastructure.
Well, right now, though, it's to pay the loan back.
Correct.
Until the loan's paid back, we couldn't use that for anything else.
Well, no, there's still, there's still $500,000 in it. And we're getting, the loan is 116 a year and we're typically getting about, well, they should really get about $300,000 in special assessment.
What'd you say the balance was, Matt?
It was about, it's about $500,000.
I didn't hear any.
We need to come up with some guidelines on what that 401 money can be used for then, other than just a slush fund?
Besides infrastructure. It can be used for infrastructure and then any restrictions you want on it.
Right, but even just saying infrastructure, that's a broad category.
Exactly.
Okay.
Just so everyone is on the same page, if I might, there has been a request that the mayor could possibly do a friendly veto of a 10% levy increase to give us a chance to come back with another number, such as eight and a half percent. And I would be willing to do that. So I would work with administrative office and veto of the 10% increase, giving us the opportunity to come with a resolution for some other number. Could be eight and a half percent. It could be any number that we can agree on. But I just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that that's among the possibilities of what we could do at this time.
Which would have to be approved next Tuesday.
Correct.
At the meeting.
Yep, we have until Tuesday to lock it down.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you. I guess, and one of the things that we had spoke about the last couple of years in my review is for me as the administrator to put my two cents' worth in and to make more recommendations to the council as far as what I feel is correct.
That's only when you agree with me.
And what I suggest you do. With that being said, you know, I understand the idea of pushing this at, in moving this to the eight and a half percent. However, it would be my recommendation as the administrator that we stick to the 10% for a couple of reasons. One is the fact that we are looking at, we had a couple of conversations earlier, even in this meeting here, about how we were going to need to look at potentially redoing our assessment policies. That's going to take money. It's going to be, either you transfer it in from the general fund or you do a separate bond levy for those. And either way, those add to what the levy is that hits the taxpayers. Other thing we're looking at is the 280 fund. We talked about that earlier today with the, in the EDA. That is running at a negative. Something's going to have to be done on that, either an EDA levy or a transfer from the general fund or something along those lines if we're going to keep some of the programs that we have that are going on. I understand the concept of taxes and I pay taxes here as well. Mine went over 5,000 here now for the first time. The issue I have is that in the long run, what we provide costs money and what the department heads and the staff put together and put forward is what our recommendation is. So I guess I will stick to my recommendation for the 10%. However, it is ultimately up to the council. You certainly can decide whatever you want. We do have an idea of what we would do for the eight and a half percent. And this is my job. I get paid to do this. So whatever the council decides, I will not, I do not take it personally. It's just, that's why you get elected, is to make these decisions. My job as staff to give you what my recommendation is. So that's the end of my speech.
Thanks, David.
I'm pretty sure if we can get to the eight and a half, we should get to the eight and a half, if it's feasibly possible. We looked at it. I think we can do it. And I know people in my neighborhood are asking for it, so.
Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. Do we have any forecast of what either an eight and a half percent or a 10% levy in 2018, how that would project to levies in 19, 20, 21?
So are you asking for 10% every year if we stayed at this level?
No, I guess I'm asking if we go forward with a 10%, what would we project that we would need to have as levies in those out years compared to eight and a half percent if we are trying to get to where we need to, fund balance, capital investment?
So are you saying if we go eight and a half now, is it going to be 12 and 99?
Right. Yeah, I'm just wondering, are we, you know, being penny wise today and foolish tomorrow? I don't know. That's why I'm asking the question, so.
I guess I'll make an attempt and Carla can jump in on this. It's difficult to predict and I guess I'll take a step back as far as when we first started this process, we had the, the fund balance was in trouble. We had kept levies artificially low for several years and we had spent the fund balance down to the point where it was dangerous levels. We had emptied some of our EDA funds and so we were, we had to make up some lost ground. I think we took some very good steps to that. It took a little bit of time. I remember we had a larger increase that was vetoed by the mayor and we were set at that 5%. So we had the 20% and 18% for those two years. We had the recommendation for 10% this particular year. So our wages are, we have the step increases, so typically that goes up more than inflation due to the fact that we have the step increases rather, in addition to the COLAs. So wages will go up, most likely go up larger than a 2% cost of living in 19. So I guess what I'm trying to say is that we've gotten, I think with the steps that we have taken to this particular point, if we maintain where we're at, I don't anticipate the 10% in 2019. However, that being said, there are some other issues that we, that the council and staff will have to take a look at. One of them is special assessments. One of them will be the EDA funding. Those are unknowns on what they would cost at this point. So if we maintain, I guess my answer would be if we maintain where we're at as far as staffing level and services and our assessment policy, I don't anticipate the 10% increase next year. My estimate would be something less than that, more along the lines of passive inflation plus some of the further adjustment based on our steps. Carla?
The only thing I would add is that, you know, we have to look at our rinks and I know that even at this time, one of the compressors is kind of limping along, so we hope that it will stay working. So that's just another thing to keep in mind that we will have to address.
The other thing we don't know is what'll happen with local government aid. The loss of LGA this year was about a 2% increase all by itself. And that's kind of a wild card for our community in out years as well.
Carla, one last thing. Is to explain, if you look on the eight and a half percent sheet that you passed out, so with that, are actually overall revenues went up point, let's say you're going point nine percent over the previous year and that's with the eight and a half percent levy increase due to the fact, roughly $90,000 from the intergovernmental aid. But could you just explain a little bit how the other financing sources affected that as well? Because that was a decrease of 200 and some thousand.
That's on the list here and that's those transfers for the levy out of the 280 fund and the 401.
And I think, you know, back to your first question, Mr. Murphy, where's this coming from? I think each of us has it in our minds that if property taxes go up any faster than the rate of inflation, what we're doing is we're taking more of people's take-home pay. You know, as this portion of their expenditure goes up faster than inflation, then they have to make some cuts in other areas. And so the hope would be to always, always get this down as close to the rate of inflation as we can for that reason, so that folks get to keep a bit more of their money to spend on their own priorities. I know that is something everybody talks about, let people keep their own money, but this really, that's, this is a good faith effort to try to do that and not just by me, by every single one who seems a little bit favorable to this. It's right there.
And I don't disagree with that and that's why I prefer, you have, you as the elected officials have to make that decision. You're the ones that have to face the voters. My job as staff and our job as department heads is just to make sure that you have all the information and that you're aware of what some of the potential repercussions may be so that you can make an informed decision and that's what I was trying to do.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Really, your perspective helps us a bunch.
You know, I appreciate Mr. Grassel and Mr. Reapell reaching out to me to talk about this and talking with the mayor and Mr. Murphy and Carla to see what we can do something and one that is, Mr. Grassel said is something we need to do and I think everybody does that. We do best as we can to make sure that we're taking care of everything that we have to take care of. I guess it gets down to is that do we want to look at the eight and a half? Then, I know Mr. Grassel's wishes, Mr. Vedder's, do we want to bring this back next Tuesday? And we can discuss it then and if we go, things might change more when we go back to 10. I don't, I'm just, want to make sure this is, everybody's wish is that we do this and move forward.
My hope would be that the fund balance would be, we'd at least have a balanced budget. The eight and a half, we're dipping into our fund balance by, and it's not a lot, just short of $20,000. So my goal would be to get that to zero. And if you move up to 9%, does that get you to zero then rather than the eight and a half?
But if we took the 20 surplus and found 20 elsewhere, we could get to zero, well, that's your 1%. But we just have to clean up that, see at eight and a half, we show a negative 40-ish. So we pick up the 20 from the line above that and then another 20 somewhere else.
Yeah, and that's what I'm saying. So you net, with eight and a half, you're tapping into your fund balance by just short of $20,000. You're not increasing your fund balance at all.
Yeah, but you're not going down because the 20 is a, is a contribution.
Oh, yeah, but then you're still short by 40 grand. So no, it's not.
Well, if you zeroed out the 20 on the line above.
Yep.
Then our negative goes down to 19.
That's what I'm saying, yes.
Now, if you can find savings elsewhere of that 19, 9, then you got to zero.
Or revenues of 20,000 and then you got to zero.
Yes. So then you're, yeah, as you say, then you're closer to 9% instead of eight and a half.
Correct.
Yep.
You're there.
Those are your two options.
Carla?
Thank you, Mr. President. If we went to the 9% with the fencing out, it'd be 17,780. And if you took the 20 out not to increase the fund balance, you would, you would balance.
So you'd be there at none?
If you did the 9%. And, and we did do some estimating and there's another paper there on what our fund balance would be at the year end if it's going like it did last year for accounts payable and such. And I am estimating what our payroll runs. That's the other sheet that you got, that their revenues are about 400,000 more than expenses. And so that would be increasing our fund balance.
And this is a, this is an estimate.
Yeah, rough estimate.
It could go either way, but yeah, that's what I'd be looking at.
I mean, if nothing else, we will break even, but our, you know, it looks like we will increase our fund balance after 2017.
Okay. Mr. Pachivinsky?
I don't know. I, I want to think. I mean, a friendly veto? Is that the, the other option procedurally is to amend what we've already done? Does it have to be vetoed?
Question for Mr. Gulf.
Do you have to have it done before he has the requirement to sign?
Which we're not going to accomplish, so there will have to be a veto. Correct, Mr. Gulf, then?
It's, it's fine. Everybody knows that there's agreement at least for, to have the opportunity to revisit it on this coming Tuesday.
Jim? Mr. Reapell? Henry?
Yeah.
Mr. Demers?
I guess. Yeah, I mean, I'm in the same boat with Mr. Vedder. I don't, I certainly don't want to go backwards. We've done everything we could the last couple of years to get where we are. I'd have to go through and consider what the costs are given to.
Let's get better at it. Mr. Grassel makes the motion and I second. Let's go, be done.
We can't vote on it till here.
No, I know, but prepare for the next.
The least we can do is, is to your point, Mr. Demers, is to look at it next Tuesday.
Yeah. I, I think there's one thing we should bring out. It's unfortunate. The local government aid has been reduced substantially for East Grand Fork. For some reason, they think we don't need it. Well, our people need part of the state money as well as anybody else. And that's the biggie. And we, we, we deal with the final result. Some of these people in St. Paul, most of them don't. That's the difference.
Would everyone be okay if, if we direct staff to show the best that you can, how could you do it at eight and a half? And we kind of know how you do it at nine. Nine would be to just zero it out. But if you could just prepare to show us by Tuesday what it would look like, best way that you can do it at eight and a half, best way that you can do it at nine, and then we'll, we'll make a final vote in that range, hopefully.
Jim?
Be okay?
Sure. That's the direction we get from the council, sure.
Fine with everybody. Sounds like it, so. Okay, appreciate it. Great discussion. Move on to number eight, consider a storage lease agreement with DNR. Mr. Murphy?
Can I skip this one after this last one?
You don't have to bring it at all.
No, just because this one is another one that is, there's some unpleasantness, I guess, about it or whatever. I spoke with the DNR again. They increased their offer to $40 a month from the 30. They said that is their best offer that they can get, that they can give for this particular season. They went into this field about how, you know, that the expenses get split between us and then we get profit sharing and that, so that if the, the expenses go up for the storage portion of it, that will then reduce the profit sharing that we get. And before we jump in, I, I, you know, I understand that, that if we receive the rent, you know, then it's not something that's, I mean, I, I understand that. That is the argument that they, they gave back to us. So I guess where I'm saying, at, at this particular point, I have had several discussions about this and whoever have, and it is my recommendation that at this particular thing, we take the $40 per month or the remainder of this storage season and that our, you know, our contract is up and we need to then include that in there as far as how this would work with the cost splits. This would be something outside of the cost splits or what, that we would need to negotiate this into the next, to the next contract.
Well, that's not going to save, fill our budget with that 40 bucks.
That would be my recommendation. It was just telling them that we, we take the 40 for this storage season and we're going to be in the process of renegotiating for our upcoming DNR contract.
Mr. Reapell?
So they're not going to deduct it off their expenses, right?
They probably will put it in for their next years, I would guess. They didn't answer that. They probably, they probably listed it as an expense.
That's charged a mighty, so we get our 40. They rejected us once on that, right? When we tried to do it?
Yes.
So can we reject them?
Sure. I suppose we could move their stuff up.
If they have to move their stuff, they're going to have to find a place that costs a lot more money.
Yeah.
Todd's over there looking at his chops, so.
Don't be back to you real fast.
What's the wishes, I guess, from the council at this time? Mr. Pachivinsky?
It's a piddly little thing. I just say, let's get it behind us and let David work on more important things and deal with it when we come up to it.
Mr. Grassel?
I guess they keep doing this to us all the time, though. That's the problem. I mean, it, you know, before it was how, charging us for going through and trying to figure out what maintenance our lawn mowers versus their lawn mowers and we can only pay you this much, we can't pay you that much and I don't know. I'm with Mr. Vedder. I want to charge him 400 a month. I mean, but, I don't know. I, I guess it, I don't think it's going to be a winning battle.
Can I just comment on Mr. Grassel's comments? And part of the issue is, is in the four years that I've been here, we deal with a different DNR rep in this area. It seems like every year that we do this and they always come back and they, they look at it. So it's, you're not dealing with the same people all the time, so there's not continuity into it. And they look at the contract and they all, the different ones, and they also find, see something, read it differently than the previous one. So I understand what Mr. Grassel is saying here is because.
And then let's not lose sight. We have a strong partnership with the DNR inside that greenway, inside that campground. There's going to be, and there has been a lot of give and take. We lock onto one item like this and, and look at it kind of in a vacuum, but it's inside of a broader partnership. And I think it'd be okay to just let it ride for this season according to your recommendation and then as part of the, the annual or the, hopefully several-year negotiation that'll follow, then try to find a, a budget number for that from them.
I'm willing to let it ride myself.
When's the negotiations?
Probably start sometime this spring.
Yeah.
So this is not a, a big thing? That can be negotiated?
Yeah, the contract that we're currently under is up at the end of this year and just this week, we started talking about when we can get together and what needs to be included in the conversation, so.
I hope that we would hopefully have it done by spring. It'd be nice to have it, have it done before the camping season starts again.
Do it for Eric.
Mr. Vedder?
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. Sounds good. Thanks, sir.
I've got to add one thing on the budgets. Can we put in the budget six more microphones?
I have said something.
Just so you guys know, we are looking at giving different microphones that are actually like up on the ceiling, so we don't actually have to set them out, which is the reason why we haven't purchased more microphones up until this time.
Carla?
I did actually text Cory during the meeting and I asked her to come and do her thing this week and do the opening.
Number nine, discussion on union contracts.
I apologize, but with the union contracts, it always seems like it's, things go up to the last minute as far as when you are presenting the, the information and the contracts, you put the, the language into the contract and you send it to them and they read it differently than you wrote it, so you have to rewrite it to make sure that it reads the way you both understood it during the negotiations. So with that, I had initially not had the law enforcement labor services one in here because there was a disagreement over the meaning of language in one item in the LES. However, in the meantime, since this went out last Friday and now we have agreed on that language, so LES is ready to be discussed tonight. However, AFSCME is not. It's, and, and AFSCMEs were just clarifying what the intent was. That was one that came up. So I don't anticipate that being an issue. I might even be able to bring it to the next council meeting for approval. But however, we do have the International Association of Firefighters. So the, other than some of the terms as far as some miscellaneous stuff, the, the main items in these contracts are the health insurance is set for 2018. We know what our increase is, which is zero. And that we are, the city has a maximum exposure in 19 and 20 of 4%. It is a 2% cost of living for 2018 in both of these with a reopener for 18 and 19. So we have things, all, all these contracts are for three years. The reopener in 18 and, excuse me, 19 and 20 due to the fact that we are looking at our wage comparison study to see where we fit with comparable cities and where our comp worth is as far as the traditionally male and female positions in the city and if we are, if we are equitable in that. So based on that, we do not know where those positions are going to come in at. So with that then, that's why we have the reopener. We are anticipating getting that report here on May 1st of this particular year, 2018. So we should be able to start that process very early. And then we also changed how we do the HSA contributions to allow the, to have the employees have more skin in the game and to incentivize the contributions to the HSA for the insurance. Those council members that were there in the negotiations, is there anything else you'd like to add? But those are the highlights of these particular contracts.
Mr. Demers, you have anything to add, sir?
Uh, just that overall, I think, at least, at least with these two, can't speak to the other ones yet until they're finished, but at least with these two, and I would say generally, I felt like the negotiations were, were good. I think everybody came to the plate, the table with realistic expectations and an understanding of the fiscal environment that we're in. We couldn't get to 10%, much less eight and a half percent without, you know, getting our employees to buy into the type of, you know, packages that were, that we negotiated with them. So I think that was important. I think there's minor changes. I think, I, I can speak for myself, but I think for everybody that, I think every, everybody on the city side, we came away feeling like we got across what we wanted to get across and I think they, they felt like we were being somewhat fair and reasonable, but maybe, maybe not getting everything they wanted. But I think these are fair contracts and I thought Dave did a pretty good job of getting and ushering through them, shepherding these, these contracts. It's a, it's not a fun process, but it can be, it can be not damaging. It can be not negative, you know? And I think because of Dave and, and his relationship with staff, it was overall positive. And hopefully we can get these other two in the barn as well, but I would, I would recommend strongly that we, we move forward with these, these two as.
I anticipate AFSCME being, it's, it's just a clarification really. We just weren't able to get it ready for tonight. I anticipate AFSCME to be included in Tuesday's. At this point, though, the Public Works Union, we are scheduled for mediation in January. But yeah, our negotiations, oh, it actually went pretty well. We only had one brief temporary walkout, but they came back in.
Mr. Vedder?
Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to echo Mr. Mer's sentiments. I think that everything was very positive. I'm always impressed that we can sit around a table and have a reasonable discussion with our employees and come up with a, the end result. So it was a very positive experience for me and I appreciate the help of everyone.
No, and I'd, I'd say the same thing. It was good to have everybody sit down and go through it. I think it was great discussion and I know that I couldn't be that 100% of the time and I appreciate Mr. Murphy, what he, what he did and I thought it was very good, good discussion and looking at what we have and what they, they, like Mr. Demers said, knowing what we can work with and understanding that is a big factor that I think helped it go smoothly, so.
Mayor?
Just want to compliment the whole group. I'm not part of the, of the contract negotiation team, but the way that you are doing it, the process that you have guided by you with the council members and even to the employee groups and the. groups, and the, and the buy-in and the trust that's developed that can let this happen. When I was here before, there was a time when we were doing one-year deals, and sometimes it was nine months into the contract period. What does that mean? It's a one-year deal, and you're nine months in, so three months later, you have to be doing a new contract, hopefully negotiating it. So in other words, it never ended. You were in a perpetual state of back and forth, and nobody really could get to work and get their stuff done because it was a constant back and forth. So to do a three-year deal and to have it basically lined up before the contract period begins is excellent work. So thanks to everybody involved.
Mr. Pachivinsky?
I also just want to say thank you to the council members that stepped forward to, to do this work. Like Mr. Demers said, it's not always pleasant. And Mr. Vedder and Mr. Olstead, Mr. Demers, I just want to thank you for doing it, so I don't have to.
Anybody else have anything? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Entertained a motion to adjourn.
Move.
By Demers. Seconded by Reapel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Go with same sign. Motion is carried, meaning is adjourned.
Jason. Jason. Speaker. Pro.
Yeah, print set, paper, I don't know. See, this is tape. I want people to see this.
I'd be making before and after the minutes.
Yeah, yeah.